Move on.
Move on. Can't do that.
You go ahead.
Here comes Jamil.
Good evening, thank you for watching. This is the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, March 27th, 2014, 7:31 PM. Commission is... Yes, we're here, okay. Called a order?
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
Then we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Any comments? Second?
A second?
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Next, we move on to oral communications and as there is nobody in the audience, we'll close oral communications and move on to written communications. What I have in front of me is just one piece of mail from the New York Times, I'm not sure where this came from.
Staff provided that to you as a follow-up to the previous discussion you had about the possibility of the city developing mobile home parks?
Got it, thank you. So, it is a letter from, well, it's a magazine article from the New York Times called "The Cold Hard Lessons of Mobile Home Units" by Gary Rivlin, March 13, 2014, for anybody who's interested. And that's the only piece of written communications I have. Anybody have anything else? That's actually what we're discussing this evening, correct?
Yeah.
No, that's not part of our written communications. That's actually part of what we're looking at this evening. Okay, so then we move on to our study session. Mr. Tinn.
In this first study session, we're going to be updating Chapter 5, Meeting Housing Needs, which describes various potential housing programs from the past housing element and will consider new ones. One of the changes recommended is to just update the descriptions of various ways in which the city may assist in improving the availability, affordability, and quality of housing. The most substantial revisions involve the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the distribution of its property to the Brisbane Housing Authority, and the disposition of what is left of the redevelopment agency's low and moderate income housing funds. The city attorney is currently sorting out which of the redevelopment agency's powers the housing authority might be able to retain in terms of the city's housing programs. The section on inclusionary housing has been updated to explain that the city is exploring other options to help provide affordable rental housing, which we'll be discussing further. The section on redevelopment, low and moderate income housing funds, and the first-time home buyers loan program will be revised to refer to the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County's Heart Opening Doors Program as a means to continue to provide assistance to first-time home buyers. Newly added draft proposals to encourage secondary dwelling units are a public information campaign to inform property owners about new parking standards, technical assistance to speed processing of units that meet the city's standards, reduced administrative permit fees for units created within the building envelope of existing single-family residences, and consideration of a loan program for second unit construction. New potential policies and programs identified by the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County include the following. Housing impact fees charged to market-rate housing developments would generate funds for affordable housing. The amount of the fee would be determined by a next study that evaluates the extent to which development of new market-rate housing generates additional demand for affordable housing. The fees could be used as a replacement for lost redevelopment housing funds and to offer financial assistance to developers of rental housing in exchange for providing inclusionary rental units consistent with the Palmer decision. Commercial linkage fees would be similarly charged to new commercial projects that provide jobs that do not pay enough for employees to afford market-rate housing. Rededication of boomerang funds to affordable housing would compensate for the loss of redevelopment agency low and moderate income housing funds by dedicating all or a portion of the ongoing year-over-year bump to property taxes that will come back to the city from the county as a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. Graduated density zoning to encourage parcel assembly is something that we've already implemented in the SCR01 district. To help motivate owners of small parcels to sell so more developable-sized sites can be created, graduated density zoning would allow higher densities on larger parcels. Universal design standards could be required for a portion of new housing developments to make dwellings as accessible as possible without expensive adaptations. Fee waivers for secondary dwelling units dedicated to low or very low-income households could be granted in exchange for a recorded restriction that the unit be rented at affordable rates in compliance with state law. The Planning Commission should discuss whether any of these programs and policies should be added to Chapter 5 so that they may be considered for adoption by the city. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No.
No? Go ahead.
So, I would pick 113, 1.3.
Caroline, I can't hear you. Can anyone hear me? Yep. Okay.
Can we go through the graduated, can we go through the three? My understanding is we have to see if we want any of these or all of these?
The new ones that I listed in the staff report and just reviewed, yes, because those aren't in the current housing.
The graduated, the universal, and the fee waivers?
Okay.
So, I thought we had something somewhat similar to the graduated density zoning. What is the difference?
You know, actually, there is no real difference. That's what we currently have in the SCR01 district. I think, though, what this describes are some variations. And since we didn't seem to get any traction with what we have in the books so far, I don't know whether that's just a matter of waiting and seeing as the market improves, or whether we should consider taking one of the three approaches that's mentioned here, abrupt sliding and downzoning. The one we have now is, I guess you would call it sliding, in that if you propose to build a single-family house, you can only have one single-family house per, I believe it's like, let's say off the top of my head, 7,500 square feet. If you wanted to build a duplex, you'd only need half that square footage, and if you want to do multiple family, you could do it at an even higher density. So depending upon how many units you wanted to build, the density allowed would increase in a kind of sliding scale. So they would encourage people to try to acquire sites that would be large enough that they could build them all the family. What this talks about is a slightly different approach where the density increases proportionate to the site size, not the type of unit that you want to build. So that's the difference. And if you're really trying to encourage site assembly as opposed to just higher-density housing, the approach that's in the staff report would actually do that more directly.
Can you explain that in a little more detail?
So what we would do instead would be that if you had a 5,000-square-foot site, you could build one unit. If you had a 10,000-square-foot site, you could build four units. If you had a 20,000-square-foot site, you could build 10 units. So it isn't a simple ratio, but instead it increases as the lot size grows. And the intention is that if you have a small lot, you're not going to get that much value for it because you can't build that many units on it as compared to if you were to assemble lots to create a bigger site.
So are there any cities currently using that strategy besides us?
Oh, I'm sure there are, but I honestly don't know of any offhand.
So, we do have something similar up at the Brisbane Acres where, don't we?
The density transfer procedure is slightly different because it's not that the density changes with the amount of land you have. The amount of land is a constant, it's just that you can move units from one property to another or to concentrate them on one portion of a large site. So it's not quite the same intent as the graduated density zoning would have.
We were going to try this down on Bay Shore, weren't we?
That's correct.
And until we decided that Bay Shore probably wasn't appropriate for what we wanted to do.
That's true. But I think we'll get into this discussion further as we proceed with the study sessions. We may still want to take a look at southwest Bay Shore for less intensive development.
Right. And so that would be something that isn't from base down there?
Not necessarily, that's correct.
Okay. And then that would stay mixed use? Now, could you explain a little more about what downzoning is? So, it says downzoning, where zoning densities are already high regardless of site size, lower densities are imposed on smaller sites? I just kind of went through, I just couldn't quite grasp it.
I'm not familiar with any situation where that's been imposed, but what it sounds to me like is that, you know, essentially rather than starting with a relatively low-density zoning district and increasing the density through changes with the zoning, instead you're starting with a zoning district that already has a high density, but you're trying to, I wouldn't necessarily say penalize, but disincentivize smaller parcels from developing. It kind of goes in reverse. I don't think downzoning would.
What, turn them into community gardens? Like, just not quite sure what that means.
Well, I don't think you'd want to go that extreme. Then you're, you know, broaching into taking.
Or turning them into open space, or, huh?
But they are developmental, they can be developed and there is no penalty for being there, right?
That's correct. You wouldn't want to downzone them to the point of no development rights. You want to be able to retain some development right.
Because otherwise, it's a big thing.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Does anyone have more questions? I have plenty of questions.
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
F. 1.3, paragraph 4. Fee waivers for secondary dwelling units dedicated to low or very low-income households. In exchange for the financial assistance provided by waiving the secondary dwelling permit fee, second units could be required to be rented at affordable rates in compliance with the Palmer Decision of California Civil Code's Restrictions on Rent Control. Could you explain that, please?
Let's go backwards, starting from the end.
Backwards, okay.
So, the Palmer Decision essentially said that rent control includes inclusionary housing programs, that if you want to restrict the rent on a new rental unit, you have to provide some type of financial assistance to the property owner who will then agree in exchange for that financial assistance, they will restrict their rents on their property. So it's a voluntary agreement that would have to be reached.
And typically, what kind of reduction in rent, which is the layman's terms, is required?
There is no set standard, and because this would be a mutual agreement, you know, it would depend upon the parties negotiating it. With Brisbane's secondary dwelling units, based upon previous studies that we've done, surveys taken, the rents for second units are already relatively affordable. So it may be that we're not really asking for that greater reduction as to what someone would charge for a unit, particularly if they were planning on renting it to a family member, an employee. They were already intending to kind of subsidize that rent. But this would have the potential to restrict that into the future.
Can we get clarification on that moving forward, please?
Sure.
Caroline?
So I wanted to know, have we ever used HEART? I mean, we've been contributing to HEART, but what does that mean? How much is in the funding for HEART throughout the county, and what's the funding that we're presently giving and?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Oh.
A lot of that tends to be, what HEART will often do is have programs that people kind of apply for, it's like first homeownership, you know, first buyer-type programs, and, you know, there is an element of people have to be willing to take advantage or actually go out and participate in the program. There's not like, as far as I understand, there's no sort of set ratio of this many units in Brisbane or this many in San Mateo or whoever. It's a matter of it's open to everybody countywide, anyone in Brisbane could participate. But they have to kind of make that effort and find the right conditions where they can participate in those programs.
Do you think this is going to be a strong program, or is this taking the place of, I'm just kind of a little confused about HEART?
My understanding is that it is taking the place of our first-time home buyers program, which with the loss of the redevelopment funds, you know, the city was no longer able to continue.
So if someone, so what you're saying is if someone applies, then the county will sort of look and see if they can come up with the funding, if I understood what you said?
No, the program is funded, it's a matter of are there the right match of homes available and home buyers who are qualified? So the funding is there. I'm not really familiar with how it's kind of divvied up amongst jurisdictions, but, you know, as I understand it, I mean, I've seen probably over the last six months four solicitations for HEARTs having one of these first-time homebuyer workshops, you know, in various places. We put it on the website, so if an individual in Brisbane is interested, they will make that contact directly with HEART to participate through the program. So the city's involvement is actually, you know, pretty much negligible, other than promoting it, trying to connect the, you know, interested people with the program, but our involvement in the program is negligible.
I think it's page 1.17? A home, the program home? Let me see, I'm sorry. It's 1.17? Investment Partnership Program, has that been utilized at all, or is this something new?
The Home Investment Partnerships Program?
Yeah, is this something that we have any potential to use or not?
That's an existing program, they've just changed the name for it. And Brisbane participates in it along with other smaller cities in the county, and the county essentially administers it.
So, I know that when people were trying to apply to get their houses, you know, get double-pane windows or anything, it was very complicated trying to get funding about 2009 or 10 or whenever it was. Do you know if this has become a little less complicated, or does anybody really know? Okay. I'm sorry, what?
We'll look into that, I'm not sure exactly what the genesis of that program was, whether it was more of an energy-based program or one of these.
I think it was to help with assistance in energy efficiency, and I know that it was pretty complicated to try to get any help.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Uh-huh. And then 1.19? Do you know if we are participating in any of these programs, the North Peninsula Neighborhood Service Center? Or the Rebuilding Together Peninsula? Any of these assistance programs at this point?
Rebuilding Together has done four projects within the planning period in Brisbane. North Peninsula Neighborhood Services Center is available to Brisbane residents. I don't believe the city participates directly in the program, but that's certainly available.
So if someone wanted to get some help for home repair, do they know to come to the planning department and you would help them, or do they find it online, and how do they know it's available?
Well, the city's website.
I didn't check, I'm sorry.
I believe still has links to these services. They, we had those links on there when, the last time we updated the housing element. We have a whole display of brochures from the various programs and agencies available to homeowners here at the city hall. And I'm not sure what other outreach we do.
I think that's probably when we look at sort of other components of this housing element, a lot of that previously was funneled through the, you know, when we had redevelopment funds and there was really, you know, dedicated position in the city who'd administer that and administer the housing, the city's housing program. Probably we should look at a better way of trying to, as that's kind of gone away, some of those, maybe that function, functionality is a little more dissipated, and I think it's a good idea to look at how we can make it as easy as possible, you know, the information that's available regarding various home programs, home improvement programs, or funds available for low, moderate housing rehab programs. I think that's a good idea that we should look into that.
Yeah, I think that if we're going to try to move forward, I think we need to somehow make, I don't know how to, you know, help the people with assistance, but this looks like that's what's available.
Yeah, make it more accessible for them to, because no one's going to want to read this housing element to find the information, it's a matter of putting it, making it available to the wider public, so, yeah, we understand the point.
So, I was thinking that one of the ways we could do it is maybe to put something at the library. I was thinking that maybe at the churches. I'm trying to think how we could get the word out that if there is assistance, if people need to make repairs on their homes, because it looks like the low and moderate housing, one of the ideas is to get these homes rehabilitated so that they will be able to stand up in the future, you know, they won't crumble and fall apart. And I was trying to think where else we could do it. I mean, there's city hall and the library, and, so anyway, I was just thinking that if we had some kind of a sheet out there that people know that there's these, and I don't know if there's anyone who could assist some of the people in helping them. Do these agencies, do you know if it's pretty tough for them to go through the process to get the help or not?
I don't know.
No idea.
I mean, I've done rebuilding together, you know, you have to fill out the applications, and then they're reviewed and selected, different criteria is used, but, yeah. And then they get different companies, you know, there's different sponsors, usually construction-related companies or other businesses will volunteer to help out, so. So the rebuilding, it works pretty well, just have to fill out the application.
I think that would be an excellent idea to kind of let Brisbane know that this is available.
Well, I'm wondering if, I'm just thinking, our water bills go out once every three months, correct?
The what?
Our water bills are sent out.
Every two months?
Right, once every three months?
Two-month cycles.
Two months, okay. What if every second cycle or something, we had a single sheet that goes out in the water bill that says, "Did you know?", and just put in some of these things that people are not necessarily going to even think about or go looking, and just collect those tidbits of information over that period, and people are like, "Oh, no, I didn't know that I was qualified for this, that, or the other." I mean, because there's so many little things that people, and people are not going to go looking necessarily at the library except for the people who.
When they go to pay their fines.
Pay their book fines, yeah, right.
Hardware store.
Hardware store, now that's.
Yeah, really. Yeah, I think that in city news, you know, there, I think there, you know.
Did you know you are, you know, these services are available to you? Just ask or something.
I do know that one of our residents has come at least twice to the city council and said, "I need some help with, you know, for whatever it was." And I don't know if she knows about all this and has looked into it, certainly she should know, but I don't know if she has.
The HEART, did you say, the HEART program's on the calendar, because there's an event, you know, there was an event in March that, you know, right? So, so the calendar, I mean, works too.
Right. I mean, from my perspective, everything should be as electronic as we can make it, but we still have a huge population who are not in the electronic world.
Oh, yeah.
Or who are too busy to go look at the city calendar.
Right.
And, but everybody opens their water bill, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. If they want their water.
We'll send out auto-pay, but yeah.
I know, as people get older, their money is getting, you know, less and less and tighter and tighter, and, you know, one of the ideas is to keep people in their home and maybe even bring in roommates, so, you know, to shore up the house as much as possible.
The thing is, the thing that's missing here is you can inform these people, but you need to have resources here within this staff to explain it to them, walk it through the whole process, because without that, they will be lost. You may know the program is there, but complicated forms to be filled out and all that. So my point is that if the city can have some kind of a resources available where these people can go and get the help they need in filling out the forms and all of that, a lot of people in Brisbane probably won't even know how to start and how to fill out those forms. And to send them to San Mateo County or some other office, they will be lost. So I think the in-house resources necessary if you want to promote this program. And also, I think that occasional, you know, seminars or workshop or something like that may be a good idea too, where you can advertise everywhere that we're going to be discussing about this. Come, if you are interested in getting the low-income housing benefits, come over, you know, so.
Well, a lot of people don't want to make that public either, so that.
No, I mean, they don't have to make it public, but they can come for it as a curiosity. You're not saying that you come and sign up for that, but if they need any help, there should be a resources here within the city, here at the city hall, where they can go, have the applications there, and they can help them fill out the form, walk it through the whole process.
So one way would be the resource list, however we decide to circulate that, and I think all those suggestions hit on different needs in our community. But another way, short of ideally a staff member or someone from the city providing the services, oftentimes a lot of the nonprofits will get together and do form-filling workshops. And so if we were to get the word out, I know Rebuilding Together and North Peninsula Neighborhood as well as Hip Housing, which we don't utilize, but is comparable to HEART, I'm sure if we talk to them, we can get some sort of consortium going where they can have clinics maybe once, twice a year, so that way, that'd be another way we can promote the fact that we have these services available, but deal with the aspect of the shortage in funds that would allow us to have a personal resource here at our, at our city facility.
Yeah, somebody who's knowledgeable to explain it.
Exactly.
But just by promoting the program probably will not help as much, and it will make them aware. But a lot of people are shy of going through the whole rigmarole, filling out the forms, and they can be very complicated, you know, I mean, these agencies don't make it very simple. It should be very simple to begin with, but they don't. They make it so complicated that anybody who wants to fill it out, there really has to have some kind of a knowledge as to what to say and what not to say.
Well, sometimes we've held meetings through the library or down below the library, and those, you know, it's. And those, you know, it's possible we could invite some of these groups, someone to come talk about the different, you know, their agency. And I went once to one at the library, I was shocked at how many people were there, about writing wills and living trusts. I went down there and there must have been twenty people.
And also, also some of these, you know, organizations we have like Lions Club and others, Eagles, you can, you can ask them, see if they can participate and sponsor some program like that.
Oh, that's a really good idea.
So, so that the city funds are not used, but these agencies, I mean, these organizations are willing to help. They have the funding to sponsor these kind of things. So that might be another possible way to do it.
That's a collaboration.
Yeah.
The Lions Club, I hadn't thought of the Lions Club.
Yeah, service clubs.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, and the Brisbane Village is coming together too. Have you had an opportunity to talk to them yet? Village people? You did?
Well, Nancy's on the email list now.
Okay, great. Because that's, that's something else that's evolving in, in Brisbane is the Brisbane Village. So it's gonna be a lot of places to get that information out. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, I do. Does anybody else?
Go ahead.
All right, three point. So the condo conversion requirements, are they in place now? Or is this, we were working on that before and I was wondering if that ever was put in place.
It's been adopted by the city council.
It has, okay. So page 1.54.
1. what?
5.4. Inclusionary houses. It says the difficulty of, could you explain a little more about inclusionary housing? I ran through it and I wasn't sure if this was something that we would use at some point, such as an adopt. I, I mean, do we, is this what we do? We actually do a swap and if people don't want to put in?
We haven't adopted an inclusionary housing program already. And it was the city's decision that it would be specifically to require developers of a certain number of units to provide a certain percentage of those units to be affordable at certain levels, rather than accept an in-lie fee for money that eventually the city would do something with. I think the, the thought at the time was that it was better to have the affordable units built and available when you have a product, a developer willing to build. The, there is a program currently in the housing element to update that program because it, as the city adopted it, includes rental housing, which now under state law, we're not allowed to include.
Oh, that was the other thing I wanted to ask. Could you explain that?
Explain?
What was it called? Was it the 1.?
Now, Tim, I remember when we were discussing years ago about this particular situation, we were talking about the certain percentage of affordable housing. And one of the point that we raised at that time was that some developers, they say, we will put the, the units somewhere else. And the other concern was that you don't want to develop a ghetto mentality. So is that, is there something of this sort in this particular plan or not?
That I think was part of the, the thinking that went into the city's current policy. And there, there isn't any change proposed to that aspect of the inclusionary housing program.
So they must have been in their own, own development. Okay, that's what we were looking for at that time.
Correct.
And then 1.57, the commercial linkage fees, did we do that?
The commercial linkage fees are similar to the housing impact fees in that the concept is that if you develop commercial development that impacts the affordability of housing, you should pay an impact fee that would be then in turn used to finance affordable housing programs. And basically, the rationale is that if you develop some type of commercial project that does not pay your employees enough to be able to afford market rate housing, then they're going to be forced to find affordable housing farther away from the community. They'll increase their commute times, that generates greenhouse gases. And so to try to mitigate that impact, you would require those developers to pay an impact fee that's been carefully calculated out via NEXUS study to try to mitigate that impact upon the affordability of housing in the area.
So that's called an impact fee that Brisbane uses?
Brisbane has not adopted an impact fee. We've been working with other agencies in the county on a NEXUS study. And depending upon the results of that study, we may want to pursue this further.
But this fees will go towards the development of the affordable housing, right? It will not be into, into the general fund of the city.
Right.
So that's potentially something we may adopt somewhere down the road. And then the boomerang funds on page 1.60.
The concept there is that with money that would have gone, tax money that would have gone to the redevelopment agency, now a portion of that tax increment is actually coming back to the city.
And that's the $850,000 or is it more? It said, there was an $850,000 at the beginning of the, it said 861,920?
Where do you get that number?
Uh, what is left of the redevelopment agency's low and moderate income housing fund, currently $861,920?
No, that's, that's.
Something else.
Something else. The boomerang concept is going forward from the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. So it's basically, you know, what would have gone to the redevelopment agency from property taxes, now a portion of that is still coming back to the city. And rather than it go to the general fund, it would be dedicated to the same purposes that the low and moderate income housing funds would have gone to. That's the concept.
And we have any idea when that will sort of be put in place?
I have no idea.
Or even if it will?
Well, that's really becomes a policy decision for the city council.
The city council?
Yeah, because that's a local decision. It's the city's property tax that's flowing back to the city in lieu of going to the redevelopment agency. This was, you know, a year ago or two years ago was a real push from a lot of the housing advocates that cities would voluntarily agree to do this as a way to create some revenue source for low and moderate income housing that dried up when redevelopment went away. I'm not really sure how many agencies have, you know, committed to this. Obviously, there's a lot of pressure for funding and not every agency would be interested in, on a, you know, going forward basis of, of committing that stream of revenue all the time. And, you know, that'd be a policy choice for our city council if they wanted to pursue that.
So what's happening with that money right now?
It goes back to the city's general fund.
So naturally.
Yeah, you see that, we can see the difficulty of, of committing to that. But, you know, again, low and moderate income housing, if it's a, you know, it is a priority, it's just a matter of how high a priority.
My feeling is that that money should not go to the general fund, but set it aside until we decide what to do with it. Because once you transfer the money to general fund.
I think we've been trying to meet our bills.
Then it's bye-bye sometimes.
And then what about the density bonus? On page 42, it, we discussed that, I think, right?
Page 42?
Page 42.
State law requires that we provide density bonuses for developments that provide a certain percentage of affordable units or senior units or other types of amenities. And we have adopted a density bonus ordinance that complies with state law. What?
That's the form-based one?
No, density, density bonus is similar to the inclusionary housing, although it works the other way. The developer is the one who's proposing to provide the affordable units and the city then has to increase the amount of the density that they're allowed to build to.
And that has, no one's used that or?
Well, not in Brisbane, no. But we have a policy in the current housing element that says we're also going to look at amending that to go beyond what the state mandates. So if we're willing to provide a much higher percentage of your units to be affordable, you could get an even higher density bonus. Or if you weren't able to meet the minimums that the state sets, you might be able to get a lesser density bonus. So it was, you know, to essentially expand the potential of that program to generate some type of affordable housing.
So this will not be part of the study that we have, whether we would want to do this or not?
It's already on the books, so the question would be whether you want to continue that program.
Okay, that's something to look at. And I was interested on page 1.89, how programs we have put in place compared to some of these other cities. It was kind of interesting.
I love this chart.
I, I thought it was really a great chart. I mean, Foster City has several. So it looks like we're trying, at least.
What is Atherton? Everything is not available.
So can we go back to discussing the universal design standards then?
Sure. Um, the concept of universal design standards are that they're a set of certain types of construction amenities, if I can use that term, wider door frames, grab bars, level entrances. It's a long list of items that make units more accessible to persons with disabilities. And it's been put together by a non-governmental group and it would be adopted voluntarily by the city. It's not something that's specifically tied into the state's requirements for handicap accessibility.
And I assume we have those already in the senior center, by senior housing?
I don't know that we necessarily do. I don't recall to what standard those units were built, because the, you know, that project's been around for a while then.
Isn't there a federal requirement too for the, there is, there was a federal act regarding the accessibility for disability?
That's correct, but I think we're, this is taking it even beyond that. So for example, you know, you build a, a single-family subdivision, you aren't required to have any of those units to be accessible to the degree that the universal standards would create. But if you were to adopt a policy to require that certain percentage of units be.
But the thing is, if their units are not designated as a senior housing, then what's the purpose of providing that?
I, I think the concept is that disabilities are not necessarily age-dependent. And as we found in chapter two of the housing element, actually, there are more people with disabilities who are younger than seniors in Brisbane than there are who are seniors.
So if, if you use that philosophy, then every single family home should meet those requirements, right?
I think that's actually the concept of the universal design standards. That's why they would be universal. And that's also why, you know, they haven't been formally adopted by the state, because that's another step farther than where we are right now. But you consider, you know, many people intend to buy a home and age in place. So there's certainly a demand for it.
But the thing is, it's, it's depending on the individuals. A lot of families don't stay at one place. I don't know what the average turnaround is.
Well, I, I think part of the intention though with these standards are that they are not going to substantially increase the cost of development, that they are simply items that are planned into the design and construction of a home so that you don't have to, for example, retrofit later on and go to a greater expense.
So then if you, if you have a two-story building, then you have to have an elevator.
That's not part of the universal.
But it's, it's part of the, you know, if you're handicapped, you need some, some ways to get to the second story.
Not necessarily. I know over at Altamar where I live, I was looking at this and I was thinking that Altamar had pretty much built in probably a third of the housing could be accessible where universal design standards were already pretty much set in place.
And that actually was one of the conditions of approval.
So, so out of 100 and, I'm trying to think how many, hate to say it, I can't remember. 100 and, 215 units, approximately a third have, would be accessible for people in wheelchairs. And, you know.
Well, that makes sense, so you can, you can have a certain percentage. But not every single one.
Not every single one, but actually we have quite a number. It's, it's utilized by a few, but generally, a lot of people I know bought these places because they wanted to be able to live in them, you know, as they got aged and were able, they wouldn't have to go upstairs, they wouldn't, you know, everything was accessible.
So in that particular case, Tim, wouldn't there be a conflict between the UBC and these universal design codes? Because UBC may not require it and it's a uniform building code for the state.
Well, my understanding is that much of the building code are minimum standards.
Yep.
And if the city were able to make any necessary findings, we could require additional improvements. But I'll, I'd have to look into that further to get.
You're right, you, you can make more stringent, but not less for any of the state or federal standards.
Do you know if there's a program where, that will help people make the accommodations to universal design standards so people can stay in their homes? Is that what you were talking about?
No, no, the, this is, this is called villages that I was talking about. It's actually something that's being adopted, I think, around the country. It's, individual groups form a village, which is a, it's kind of like a co-op where people pay a membership to belong to the village. And the concept is to help people age in place by offering lots of different things. That's why this is all coming at a very interesting time, because this village concept for Brisbane is pretty far along with that group. And I think it's time that they were talking with us at these meetings. And I think it's time that they were talking with us at these meetings while we're making decisions, because they've got a lot of great ideas, they've done a lot of homework. If you look up Sausalito Village, you'll find that's a pretty good blueprint for how the village concept is working. But I just, I've been to many of their meetings. I did plan on going to all of them, but I've just been too crazy busy. But this whole thing fits together, and we should be working together, they should be working with us, is my thought process. Or at least, they should be invited to work with us on this, I would think would be a good idea, just because they've done a lot of homework that might give us some really great ideas.
Well, I do know that Medicare, if someone's on Medicare and they end up in the hospital and they have a social worker, the social worker will come back and Medicare will help retrofit the house, so that the person can return to their own.
There are ways from your microphone. I don't think anyone can hear you.
I was going to say that I know that Medicare, and if you're in the hospital, and I don't know, some cities have more of a program than others, but if you're in the hospital and you return home, then they will come and see how the home could be retrofitted so that you can return home. I was just wondering if there was any other program besides that. You know, I think sometimes you have to end up in the hospital to get the help.
I don't think it's just Medicare that do that. I mean, I know somebody else here in town who had an issue, and the hospital did come and, what are the, it's not the social workers, the, no, the, when they're doing rehabilitation therapy in the hospital, those people actually come out and.
Physical therapists.
Not even the physical therapists, no. Anyway, they come out and make recommendations. But this universal design standards has got me a little alarmed, I must say.
Why? I mean, it works very effectively in the condos that we have.
Oh, no, I'm sure it does, but in a condo development where you've got new development going in, but to, not that we've got very many spaces to put single-family homes left in Brisbane, and the ones that might go in are probably going to be on a steep hill, I don't know how this could work.
I don't know that we're proposing that every house that's being built in Brisbane meet these standards. I think, though, that the resident that was set on the ridge is a valid one to consider for future projects, certainly of anywhere near that magnitude.
Right.
But my understanding with the universal design standards is that they, for example, do not require an elevator, but they would include a toilet on the ground floor. So those are the kind of accommodations.
Well, I know it. Landmark, there is a, generally, a bedroom on the first floor, and then a bedroom and a bathroom on the first floor. So it's, well, for some of the bigger units, I think even the three-bedroom units, they have that, and then down below, they have a, you know, other bedrooms. But I don't know that it's necessarily true in viewpoint, but.
Now, the project on the base or Charles, do you know if they have that provision in their land or not?
I do not recall anything specifically. Those were all going to be elevator-served buildings.
They will be elevators?
Yes. Because as you might recall, the complex consists of two wings to each building, and there was a lobby between the two wings, and my recollection was that there's an elevator that serves that lobby. If you want, I should check that, though. It's been a few years.
It's been a few years. But now, probably, the ownership will be changed, so I don't know whether it'll still remain the same or not.
Carolyn, the lady with all the questions tonight? Do you have any more?
I think so. Oh, the Palmer includes, what is the Palmer, well, we kept reading about Palmer.
Where are you?
It's in different places.
The Palmer decision was a court case.
Oh.
That determined that inclusionary housing requirements applied to rental projects was a violation of the state's prohibition against rent control, except under the specific conditions that are exempted.
Well, that's why I couldn't understand it. I don't understand what that means.
Well, in layman's terms, if a city had rent control prior to adoption of the current Civil Code section.
Right.
You were grandfathered in, but no one could apply rent control to any units built after that date. And this was a statewide restriction.
And this is the Palmer?
What the Palmer decision was, it applied that to inclusionary housing requirements that various cities had adopted in the meantime, that said that if you were going to build a large project, a certain percentage of those units had to be made affordable. And the court interpreted that to be rent control, which would be prohibited under current state law.
But I thought we have that in place. That's why I'm misconfused. I thought that if we are asking for a building project that has more than.
We have that in place, and it's, as it applies to rental projects, in violation of state law now, under the Palmer decision. Right, it's not enforceable. So that's why there's a program in the Housing Element currently to change the inclusionary housing element, to bring it into conformance with the Palmer decision. And now, after the Palmer decision, cities have been trying to figure out ways to take advantage of whatever they can from that decision to still try to achieve the same goal, which is to provide affordable rental housing.
And the reason we didn't really move forward on this sooner is there was also an effort in the state legislation to basically reverse the effect of the Palmer decision. And there was legislation passed last year that would have done that, however, it was vetoed by the governor, so. And we were hoping last year, at the end of that legislative session, we'd have basically a legislative remedy, and we wouldn't have to revisit our ordinance, but that got vetoed last November, December.
So, that's terrible. Then people are going to be stuck with low-cost condos, and I don't think condos are particularly a wonderful place to have low-cost housing, because people, as they need to keep the repair of the building, they're going to have to pay the same amount of fees and for the upkeep of the building. So maybe they have a low mortgage initially when they move in, but then five hundred dollars a month in condo fees and other projects is going to, I don't see how that's going to work at all.
That's true. It has been an issue, and this was something that actually the Planning Commission discussed when we first adopted the inclusionary housing ordinance. And I don't necessarily have a solution for you.
Well, that's really a blow. Huh. I don't see how we can have affordable housing moving forward in construction that is really feasible and will work.
The other thing, that the NEXUS study, although we haven't seen the results of it, the one Tim alluded to, that we're participating on a countywide study, the expectation is that would provide some basis, potentially, to justify a, and a inclusionary requirement, because you basically can convert the NEXUS fee into an onsite dedication. So there's some talk about that. We'll see how that plays out. We haven't seen the NEXUS study results.
What you're saying is that the NEXUS fee would cover some of the, so if the person moves in and their condo fee, you know, they start out with the condo fee being low, because the builder is assuming part of it. And as the builder moves out, the condo fees start going up.
I think what I'm talking about is it would help put rental housing back in the, back in play for inclusionary requirements, because arguably, if someone's going to have to pay X dollars per unit they build in a fee, it's quite possible they may choose to, instead of paying the city to do that, or paying a fee, they could do an "in lieu of" and potentially reserve units on their own property within their project to achieve that same goal. So back, it's really an attempt to bring that back into play in rental property where we think it makes more sense. But I mean, that's all speculative right now, because we don't know what the results of the NEXUS study will show.
You know, if we, going back to the condos, if people are in condos and they buy, and they cannot get equity out of their unit, is that still in play where they would buy at low-cost housing? You know, say, the average condo is five hundred thousand dollars, and then there's this one, two, three, four places that are below market rate, and they cannot build So they stay in this condo, and it's going to stay low-cost housing.
Presumably, though, they will build equity as the value of the condo increases. The resale restrictions do provide that they will see at least a portion of that profit should they sell. And, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is that perhaps a condominium is a form of housing for a certain stage in one's life, and that you either move up, or perhaps, if we were able to provide more senior housing, you would then be able to move into senior housing and sell that unit and have a nest egg for your retirement.
That's true. What they used to have, the program they used to have, you moved into the condo, and you build equity, and then you tried to sell the unit at low-cost housing. If that was, did not work, then it could be turned around and sold at market rate. And I don't, and then you were able to get a percentage, or at one point, almost all the equity you built into the place. And I'm not sure, because it was my understanding that these units would stay low-cost and be sold over and over at a low-cost price. Is that correct?
You know, I don't recall the detail, Fred Smith was the one that handled this program for the city. I don't recall the details as to how the agreements were formulated for the few units that we do have. I could certainly research that for you. What you describe, I am aware of situations where that was the case.
It was the case.
And it may be.
And I certainly knew a lot of people, including my sister, who were able to, you know, start out as a nursery school teacher and afford to buy something, and then later was able to sell it before.
What we've discussed, though, when this issue came up before, was, you know, there was concern about a windfall, and that the expectation was that someone who purchased a unit at a below-market rate shouldn't then be able to benefit extravagantly when that is sold at a market rate. And, you know, part of that might be that the city just recaptures a portion of that sales price, and then uses that proceeds to fund some affordable housing somewhere else, even though that particular unit is no longer affordable.
I think that's what eventually happened in some of the cities, yes. And then, as people started to make more income, was, there wasn't anything in place that I understood to kind of nudge them out of the building, right?
Yeah, we talked about that, too. I don't recall that we had a perfect solution for it.
There wasn't a solution, as far as I could see.
No, and we got also into the issue of whether you could inherit a unit, even if you didn't meet the income limits. So there are lots of complications in these types of programs.
Those were the good discussions.
It would be easier if we could use the rent.
I had to remember all those.
It was easier before Palmer came in.
So what's our best way to proceed with all of that?
You know, what I think I'm going to do is, I'm going to take all of those new programs and incorporate those into this chapter, so that they'll be available. And if you choose not to actually adopt them, that's fine, but we've got a good discussion.
Good idea.
Well, I think I'm finished with my questions on this.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on any of this? No? Tim, was there any discussion relative to this additional handout that you wanted to have?
I just wasn't aware of, how many of you received the hard copy of the Second Staff Report, but there were pages missing from it? And so those would be between pages fourteen and fifteen of the hard copy. But I'm sorry that I didn't realize that they were copied in black and white, so you're not going to be able to see any of the green notation.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to now proceed to that second study session?
Yes.
No.
I'm, no, there is one thing, the gentleman who was here earlier, and we sent him away, did you wish to speak with us? Or are you just sitting here and enjoying the conversation? Would you like to come forward, please? So we don't need to keep you sitting here until we decide to go home? You could state your name, please.
This is nice and close, isn't it? My name is Blake Peters. I'm with Mid Penn Housing, and we're, you know, certainly, we've enjoyed working with staff on looking for an affordable site within the city here. And really, we're working with all the jurisdictions around San Mateo County in the Twenty-One Elements Program, as we're really trying to provide some assistance in evaluating the opportunity sites within each city, and really doing an evaluation on the site-by-site base, on a site-by-site basis. I'm actually doing that with my team personally, where we're evaluating each of the opportunity sites that are listed within each jurisdiction, to see if they're actually, you know, you can say a portion of those sites go to low and very low-income, you know, projects, and are going to meet those RENA numbers. But our question is whether or not they're actually viable for affordable sites or not. And so what we've gone through within each jurisdiction is actually going site-by-site and scoring each site for tax credits, for nine percent tax credits, which is the primary means for affordable housing these days. So it's really a major exercise that we're going through to assist each jurisdiction. And so it's very helpful for us to hear the planning element, or excuse me, the housing element updates, and sort of which, what tools each city is using to, you know, to implement in the new housing elements, and really what opportunity sites are being added to the housing element that were not in the last round. So really, it's more of an observation on our side, so that's why I'm here, is just to hear everything through.
Just thought, you had something to ask us, that you didn't have to wait until we were done?
Really, it's more of an observation. If you have anything to ask of us, we're.
I was wondering if you saw anything that potentially would work in Brisbane?
I see lots of things that potentially work in Brisbane, and your staff is phenomenal. We really enjoyed our relationship, and Ken and I have not actually gotten a chance to meet in person, so this is nice. I was gonna, I was really just waiting till the end of the meeting, so I could go introduce myself directly, but we've talked on the phone a number of times. The commercial linkage fee, I think, is a very important piece that a lot of cities are looking at right now. That would be a pretty easy thing to implement, and I think there's a, it's a timely nexus with reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, where obviously, if you can, if they're adding new jobs here, and you want to keep those workers local, so they don't have to be driving from, you know, Hayward or beyond. So we'd encourage the commercial linkage fee, but really, we're here to support the efforts of the Housing Leadership Council, and they've done a phenomenal job working with each jurisdiction, and we're sort of in the background, we honestly don't usually come to the podium. It's, we're one of the members of that association, and, you know, we're working with EBHO and East Bay Housing Organization in those jurisdictions on the east side of the bay, as well as Santa Clara County and those jurisdictions, they're really just helping to evaluate the opportunity sites and see if they really are. helping to evaluate the opportunity sites and see if they really are going to help, you know, hit those low and very low numbers.
And your name is Brian?
It's Blake Peters.
Oh, Blake Peters. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we move on?
Um, just to follow up on that, you might want to come at our meeting in a month, when we'll actually get to the sites. But in the meantime, the next chapter we're working with is Housing Constraints. The study session deals with the analysis of governmental and non-governmental constraints upon developing, improving, and maintaining housing for all income levels, covered in Chapter Four, Housing Constraints. Also included in this chapter is an analysis of opportunities for home energy conservation. Most of the changes recommended to this chapter would replace outdated references with current information. Comparisons have been added regarding the city's fees, 2008, '09 versus 2013, '14, and parking standards, current versus draft. Potential new programs regarding secondary dwelling unit fees and housing impact fees that were discussed in the previous study session are also described in this chapter. The chapter, excuse me, the section on constraints to housings for persons with disabilities has been updated and expanded to address the needs of persons with developmental disabilities. The Golden Gate Regional Center, which provides services and support to persons with developmental disabilities in San Mateo County, recommends that jurisdictions assist with identifying sites for low-income development, adopt policies to promote accessible homes, including universal design standards, enact inclusionary and mixed-use zoning, and promote secondary dwelling units. We will be continuing to update this chapter as information becomes available, and in the next study session, the Planning Commission will review Chapter One, Preparation of the Housing Element, and the appendices to evaluate the 2007, 2014 Housing Elements Policies and Programs for Progress Status, Effectiveness, and Appropriateness. And that concludes my presentation, if there are any questions.
Go ahead, Carolyn. I can hear you chomping at the bit over there.
Okay. So on page 2.8, it says to maintain acceptable levels of service at the intersection of Bayshore Boulevard and San Bruno Avenue, signalization with lane rate configuration will be needed. The draft general plan updates call for development of a program of traffic impact fees to fund these improvements. Was that from four years ago? Or eight years ago? And has that been actually, have we actually gotten fees, or?
We haven't yet adopted the general plan update, so that-
Right.
That program hasn't yet been developed. What we've been doing in the meantime, though, is for the projects that have been approved in that vicinity along Bayshore, and possibly on up San Bruno Avenue, we've had agreements that were signed with the developers that they will pay their portion of the overall cost of those intersection improvements when such time as the measures are actually adopted. So for example, the, the mixed-use project that was approved and just recently completed on Bayshore with the two units over the commercial space, they will pay a certain share of that cost.
Are we talking about a lot of money to signalize that intersection?
I don't honestly recall, and I would think that the agreements probably have some kind of a ballpark figure or a cap, but I don't recall what that figure is, I'm sorry.
So we're not making a huge amount of progress?
Well, there's no profit involved.
No, a progress.
Progress.
No progresses.
You, you can see, though, at that intersection, the, the kind of minor improvements that the Public Works Department has been implementing to try to improve the safety of the intersection. It's just that when we get a large-scale development in that vicinity, you're going to see traffic backing up.
Yeah.
It's already backing up.
Uh-huh. At, at certain times of the day, that's correct. But it, it would be even more significant.
Yeah. But I think the improvement that I made so far, I'm not too happy with it, because there is already a way to make a full inland. I don't know why it's not being done, because we put that green stripe over there, and nobody seems to know what that's supposed to mean. It's not in any standard.
It means drive over me.
I didn't see in any, any standards that I'm familiar with that, that recognize that. And didn't we ask Charles when we was going to build that he has to signalize that particular intersection?
No, actually, his project is going to work off of the signalized intersection that currently exists on Bayshore at the entrance to VWR, that what he'll be building-
I thought that we were requiring some kind of a signalization there.
No, what, what he'll be having to do, though, is he's going to be building, well, excuse me, the, the project will involve a brand-new frontage road to direct traffic from that project into the existing signalized intersection. And, and of course, the signalization will have to now be in four directions, because it's only in three now. So perhaps that's the improvement you were thinking of.
But then all of these signals will be preempted, right? Preemption will be there. You know what that means?
I do, but I don't know if that's going to, that's certainly the way it works in the opposite direction.
Right. Yeah, right now, that situation at that intersection is not too good. There's a lot, people have to wait a long time if they want to make a left turn on Bayshore. And I think it's a result of the, this opening of the access to, to the ridge by the post office. Before that, the traffic on San Bruno was not that much, but now it's a shortcut. People don't have to come all the way to Bank of America intersection there, they can just go through San Bruno if they're going southbound. So that increased the traffic tremendously.
So it, all it takes is one person deciding they want to go northbound, that holds up everybody else who's planning on going south. I, I understand your point.
Carolyn?
Oh, you think I have another question?
I'm sure you do.
Okay. So on page 212.
Two, follow?
2.12. It says the Jefferson Union School District adopted a 2.97 per square foot school impact fee for residential development. So that's development moving forward, I assume.
Correct. So if you're building a new house, you have to pay that fee?
Now, that's been in place for a long time, right?
That particular amount or the fee?
No, the fee.
Yeah, that, that's been in place for at least 10 years, yeah.
No, I paid when I built it 15 years ago. That's why I remember.
This is nothing new.
Nope.
And I think that's all the questions, because I think some of the questions I had in the other section pertain to this one as well.
Come here.
Is this a strategy you use to keep us cool?
Dave, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
No, I don't have any questions, huh?
And I have no questions on this. Thank you. All right, so shall we move on? Do we have any items initiated by staff?
Just, I'm sure you all heard that the city council upheld the Planning Commission's decision on the design review case for eight Thomas a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
And then the other night, the council and their goal-setting workshop, they did spend a little time talking about sort of Baylands processing, and there's a report I'll share with you, you know, have it delivered to your, you know, emailed to you, or handed out in advance to the next meeting, just so you have what the council saw. It was just informational, wasn't any decision sort of report, but just information about some procedural questions going forward, so I bet you should see that. And then lastly, a number of the commissioners here were at the Planning Commission Workshop, you know, held, sponsored by the League of Cities, and I'm sure the chair and others might want to jump into, you know, some of that reporting.
Unfortunately, I didn't attend, so.
Do you want to make any comments about what you've learned, or how you feel about it so far? Carol? Out of this one? No, okay. Then?
No, I'm thinking that since tomorrow's the last day, I kind of want everything to gel together first before I comment.
Dave, do you want to say anything?
Well, I had one comment, I, actually, John and I were speaking, I just, the difference between this workshop, or academy, rather, and the last one, which was two or three years ago, was that one? Yeah, I, I noticed that they, at least from my perspective, they were a little bit more informative about the kind of partnership between city staff and, and the commission, which was nice, because before it was just kind of, it was, of course, it's for the planning commissioners, but this time I just felt like there was a little more kind of maybe credit given, or discussions about who the planning commission works with, so that was good to see. I like that. And, and then, yeah, the other item was that the future, you know, of how the, you know, the internet's going to be, you know, used to help, you know, the, the citizens participate, and, and how kind of that's going to look and change the conversations, you know, and hopefully get people in here more in some, in some way or form, but-
It's already happening, huh?
Yeah, yeah. But there's new things going on, yeah, it's, it's happening, so. That was interesting to see, the, the different kind of companies or services that are utilizing the web, yeah, to help out.
Well, most of the big corporations don't have any meetings anymore, they do it on, online. There are software programs, you can just be in the meeting.
Oh, right, right.
So the day will come when we don't need this. We can have the-
What? We're going to become redundant? Oh, no.
Well, and to add, but face-to-face is still more powerful.
We'll all be sitting in our house.
Face-to-face is still, I mean, you see all the-
And connecting the meeting.
Got to have the people's stuff.
We'll connect you in from, you know, your lazy boy care.
So that, that way, that way you're sitting in Bahamas, you can still attend the meeting.
I just felt, I went in 2009, and I felt this time, it was just a lot tighter. The, they were, discussed the secret process for several hours, and, you know, over, what was it, about five hours total, or four hours of the secret process? And, and it was basically for everyone, and I don't remember it being that tight before. I think it was more, I don't, yeah.
It was, okay.
I, I, I think it was helpful for all different groups, you know, it was constructive for beginners as well as everyone.
Well, they had double tracks, and then they, they had the, you know, the beginning track, and then the advanced track, and then they had the joint track, so I think that that helped them kind of facilitate a better common knowledge base, and also discussion level.
Well, they seemed to think that everyone, no matter how long we've been planning commissioners, needed to review the basics, which I thought was exceptionally good.
Yeah.
And we always do.
Right. My turn?
So one point against me for not attending.
Yeah, really. Bad you. Well, you, you actually missed, well, I missed yesterday because of a flat tire, so I can't say anything, but this morning's session that I attended was called Collaborative Governance, and I think that's what's just been echoed here. And that was, from, from my perspective, the collaborative governance case studies on how to leverage public, private, and nonprofit partnerships to drive better land use planning. That was an excellent workshop this morning. Unfortunately, it showed that they're still in the old-school mode of thinking, because they put that workshop in the small space, and they put the other workshop in the large space, which was incredibly boring and no one attended it, so this tiny little room had people overflowing out the windows. But my notes, I'm not checking my messages, my notes here on that this morning, things like open data is being used by a lot of the cities, which is free program, and it means that, you know, from anywhere, the, the cities, the, the planners, the residents, anybody can access all of these open data files online in a snap, and really find out what's going on around California. Oakland is doing some very progressive work, and they're having collaborative relationships with the community at many levels. So they're basically inviting the community, or community experts, and those community experts can be high school kids who are whiz kids on a computer. People who have an interest in making things better in their community, they're inviting them in, and they're putting these people in little idea-based groups and having them work together. And it's not just a couple of special interest groups, it's great visualization on budgets, getting input on skill sets inside City Hall with a spirit of collaboration. Now, we're talking about triple-sector collaboration, nonprofit, for-profit, and government all working together, and how well that's actually working in Oakland.
And academic, too. The academic field.
Yeah, so, so they were just talking about, you know, that those, all of these people actually working together, and they're, they're trying to attract companies that have what's called the triple bottom line, not just talking about the dollars, but a lot of this is coming out of the millennials, who are really looking at those three strategies, and, and how that can all work for the betterment of all the programs in the community. And they're, they were talking very openly, and these are all people from Carnegie Mellon, hang on, who've we got? Stuart Evans, distinguished service professor at Carnegie Mellon, a couple of building company founders, Peter Co- co-founder of Open Counter Enterprises, Jack Madden's Government Partnership Manager for Code for America, and all of these people are working in really high-tech stuff. And, and what they were talking about was a new industrial revolution, which they said has only started in the last six months, and how quickly, and how with lightning speed things are changing, and we better jump on that bandwagon to stay with the new programs. You know, they said, for example, you've got, you know, Mark Benioff, for example, from Salesforce.com, I mean, he has basically-
You have what?
Mark Benioff, the CEO of Salesforce.com, has basically funded the new UCSF Children's Hospital. So they're, in Oakland, they're trying to attack, attract these kind of companies that are not just there for the money. They're there to think of what is socially responsible, and, and all these other things. So it was a very interesting conversation. The other thing, and I thought I was a bit of a geek, but I didn't know what a hackathon was. Do you guys know what a hackathon is?
Not yet.
Dave knows? No, hackathon. So I didn't know what a hackathon was, but they were talking about getting these small groups of young college kids who were whiz kids in computing together, and they'd throw a problem at them. And they put them in a room for 48 hours, feed them Red Bull and pizza, I think they were just kidding. And these kids would come up with an app in that 48-hour period, and if they had people, like people from the Planning Commission, or the planners, or the city council, who were in that hackathon, throwing the problems at them, hears, or, or helping them, they were coming up with some amazing lightning-speed resolutions to issues that maybe like we're talking about tonight, that we could sit pondering on for two years, and these kids are coming up with some really amazing results. So that was, that was actually pretty interesting, and they were also talking about, you know, data analytics and sophisticated real-time things like codeforamerica.org, which means everybody has access to all the new code things that are going on. And of course, the thing that got me very excited was, I'll bring it up here in a minute, because I know we're going to do a little presentation, sort of, of it, and don't expect me to know anything about it, because I got excited about the, the description of it, and I haven't had a chance to see it, because it was going to cost me $30 to look at it down at the hotel, and I wasn't going to do that. But it's called streetmix.net, and this is-
How's this spelled?
Streetmix, M-I-X, S-T-R-E-E-T, M-I-X dot net. And basically, I think it's, it's akin to one of the Google Free Design programs, where you can go in and say, put in a picture of your own street in town, and say, here's how I would like that to look. So it gives everybody an opportunity to start pl- So, it gives everybody an opportunity to start playing with the creative side of maybe how they'd like to see things happen in Brisbane. So, with that, can we have a quick look at streetmix.net? Oh, streetmix, yes, and it's disappeared off our monitors, by the way. Our monitors went to sleep. I think that's all.
And Ken spent about half an hour with it, so I'm sure he's an instant expert.
Okay, instant expert, what do you know?
Maybe more like fifteen minutes.
That's fifteen minutes more than the rest of us, but they were raving about this program this morning, so I thought it was a good idea for at least to have a look at it.
Are the monitors up now?
Yes, they are, thanks.
Yes, active.
So, expert, what have we got?
So, it, it looks to me, and I, I didn't get any of the talk on this, but just looking at the program, you can essentially click and drag elements of the roadway, and essentially design your roadway by clicking and dragging different features.
I think they were talking about this instead of charrettes and stuff like that, in some cases, yeah.
I think it's a supplement.
Yeah.
I think for people to visualize what a, saying, well, we're gonna have a six-lane road here.
Right.
That would help them visualize what a six-lane road looks like, or if you put a, you know, a bike lane, and a light rail line, and a sidewalk, and, you know, how, I think the idea of the visualization is very powerful to help people take things from a plan-to-dimension, and really be able to visualize that in a, in a very different way, so.
I mean, it's got all the design elements in it, hasn't it? The trees, planters, light posts, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, so you can, you can really, it's, I mean, literally, I pulled this up just minutes ago, so it's very user-friendly. You can just click and drag and get a quick visualization of, of these features, so.
And, and just coincidentally, just earlier this evening, I got a very preliminary version of the, the tap, the Crocker Park Tap, and I was kinda thumbing through it, and one of the graphics is a series of Valley Drive reconceptualizations using this very tool.
Oh, really?
So, you'll see it when that gets finalized.
And we didn't have to pay for it after all, right?
Very timely, so, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So, Ken, it's only click and drag, so, I guess.
You can, you can see on the bottom of your screen, there's these little features down here, where my cursor is, and so I just click on something here, and I can drag.
I mean, that's very user.
Add it wherever.
Yeah, it's very user-friendly, but the, the assumption is that those are the only choices that a person would want to put in their street, right? I mean, can you create your own?
Yeah, this, this would be a question I would have, is can you, how customizable is this? Can you make up an element and add it into here?
Because if you have somebody more creative, they're limited to just dragging and clicking what is available currently, as opposed to creating their own really, real version of it, right?
So, if you took the street, would, would it show the, a Google map of the street, and then you could start playing with it, or? It says unnamed street, so we don't know.
You would, you would be able to name that, you could name that Street X. Right, so if, if we wanted this to say be Bayshore Boulevard, we can, we could do a, a dimension on this, I, I would suppose, and say, okay, Bayshore has a right-of-way of X feet, and we have that much to work with, and, and we can actually scale the different elements, like the sidewalk over here, you can do a plus and widen that out, and see how that looks.
I wonder if it has a way to put in all the hills.
Well, if this program doesn't, Google Sketch does, and that's another free program that could do similar stuff.
And SketchUp is one that, that architects, landscape architects use quite a bit, and it's a bit more involved, but I think this is probably something that's very quick design tool.
Yeah, they made, they made it appear that it was, and, okay, now our tap has come back with this tool as a recommendation, so.
Something.
So, why, I got excited about it.
Good.
Are there any subcommittee updates?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't scheduled our next meeting.
When are we having our?
Through the chair, we, we do have, I have heard that the state Title Twenty-four, and also Lead and Build a Green have, have gotten far enough along that, that staff can pick that up again, and so I, I need to dedicate some time and, and get, get a subcommittee meeting scheduled with you all, so. So, we'll be doing that shortly here.
Okay, I do have something else that I would like to, to bring up. Regarding the recent eight Thomas project, since the final approval of this project at the city council, I've actually received a lot of phone calls from people who thanked the planning commission for the job that we did under the circumstances that we were given, and thanked us for our decision. I, I asked several people, and they asked not to be named, why they didn't come down and speak their mind in public. And it's a sad, sad for me to say, that without fail, each one of these people said that they felt that they did not want to be vilified, demonized, intimidated, any of those terms were used, by coming down and publicly stating what they really felt. I think this is really sad state of affairs, and they talked about the vocal minority, and they didn't want to be bullied by objecting to a decision. And these, some of these people were people who are community leaders, they're people, one of the people is from San Bruno Mountwatch, there are others who are other community leaders, and they did not want to cause any further discourse, they felt that there is a big chasm in our community as a result of this, that needs to be repaired. From my perspective, I think it is the responsibility of our staff and our city council to do some reparation work. I think we should be building communities in this town, and not putting a knife through the heart of half the people in this town, because they either dare to stand up and say they agree or disagree with something, or they're too intimidated because of a certain group of people who are always present and very vocal about what they have to say. So, I think it's up to you guys and the city council to try and do some repair work here, and try and do more things in this community that bring the community together. You know, we've got some of the community leaders who are either part of Live at Mission Blue, Brisbane Dance Workshop, and any of the other civic leadership groups in town, and if those people are not game enough to come to the planning commission or the city council, and politely say how they feel about a project for fear of retribution, we've got a problem. And, you know, we've got a problem because of how I was treated about this, and how I probably will continue to be treated about this. So, I'm hoping that you can go to the city council and, and say, this is, this was a pretty serious issue. This is a pretty serious issue about how we were treated, how, if we're getting phone calls from people saying they feel intimidated to come down and speak, we've got to do something to repair that. I feel very strongly about that, and I hope you'll back me up on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly an interesting challenge, how you go about doing that, translating what happens in a very kind of structured venue, like your meetings, like these meetings are, and everyone has a certain role to play, and I think you raise a very good point. I think it does sort of illustrate certain issues, but, you know, it's certainly gonna be beyond, you know, it's gonna be kind of a collaborative effort, I think, of the community, you know, from the staff level, and the decision-makers, and, and advisory bodies such as yours to kinda work through these kind of issues. I don't, I don't have any magic solutions, but it is something we'll be thinking about, and I'll certainly be talking to the city manager about, but I think we all have to kinda look, look a little bit inside ourselves of what happened at that, sort of in this whole thing, and what could any of us done differently, or posed, you know, however we all, whatever role we had in this, what, what could we do differently next time, or what kind of fundamental changes in, in whatever our behavior, or how we do our business, or whatever it is, that will try to keep these sort of events and this kind of bad feeling from, from recurring, so. I certainly, you know, I, I see your point, and, you know, we're certainly game and open to, to suggestions, and think through how we can sort of help that, you know, smooth over some of the, some bad feelings or hard feelings that have been created.
Well, I've, I've just seen, you know, over the years, that if you dared disagree with a certain group's point of view, or a certain person's point of view, that there is a bad habit in this town, that people are vilified and demonized, and this goes back a long, long way. And, you know, oh, I hate that person because, and it goes back to a decision they may have made twenty years ago, and that doesn't help us moving forward. That does not build community, even amongst people who've lived here for a long time. So, yeah, thanks.
But the thing is, there is no solution for that, I don't know whether the city council or planning commission can do anything about that. But I did get some calls also telling me that there are some people who hijack this whole thing. And my answer to that was that, as a planning commissioner, my job, and if you look at, you guys went through the ethics committee, I mean, ethics training program yet? It's clearly indicated that we have to be impartial, whatever decision we make, it should be based on what we think, and irrespective of whether we are liked by a certain group of people or not, because our job as a planning commissioner, they assigned us to do our job, which is to review the project, to make, make sense out of that, what, whatever we understand, and if the audience don't like that, then, you know, there will be some people who will always come forward and be against, and there are, there will be some people who will be, who will have the tendency to be very, very rude or whatever, but this is a public forum, in my opinion, and I will stick to my guns and say that if I, whatever I'm doing here as a planning commissioner, it's my duty to analyze the way I think, and if you don't like what I did, you can speak before the council member, and if you don't like whatever the decision was rendered, I'm ready to step out, you know? If they don't like me, whatever I said here, but I'm not gonna be twisted by somebody who wants to see it in their way, because I, my job is to be as ethical as possible, to the best of my knowledge, I will make a decision, and whether they like it or not, that's up to them. But you are right, that there are certain group of people in the town, they have made that as their effort, that every, every time there's some, something goes against them, then they will come in a strong power to, to subsidize the, the. The thing that bothers me the most is when they come to the planning commission, they don't present the same thing as when they go to the city council. So, as a city council, also sometimes they hijack the, 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 the planning commission decisions also, and I I will see the lot of instances that have happened in the past. So, if there are any changes to be made, my, my suggestion to the city council is send it back to the planning commission. They are the one that you, made it, made them responsible to make a decision, and if there is a fundamental difference in that, city council should not make the decision, should be done by the planning commission and then go back to the council. Like, for example, reducing the height by two feet, it should have been, come back to the, to the planning commission and say, what do you, will you guys analyze it again and see, rather than city council take it upon themselves and make the decision. So, that's, I, I sent that message all along, and I'll still continue to say that, that there should be some kind of a difference between the responsibility of the city council and the responsibility of the planning commission, and it comes to the changes of the, the original project, then it should go back to the planning commission for their review, because they are the one made responsible to review that particular project, not the city council. City council gets the, the position from us and listen to all the various parties, and then come up with a suggestion, say yes or no, or we need the modification, go back to this planning commission. That's the way I look at it, and I will make, I will continue to make the decision based on what I think is right, not what the person X thinks.
I think, I think one of the ways that we can help facilitate a more amiable conversation with our, with our community is to remind everyone that we have all a certain process that we're a part of, and that role that we play here as planning commissioners. We're required to be the interpreters of what the current laws are. We don't, we ourselves are not policymakers, so I think one of the ways that we can reduce the contention is when we all recognize what body we're approaching, what, what we're asking from that body, and whether that body itself can, can actually provide that change or that decision, or, you know, take that interpret, interpretation and apply it in a certain way. And I feel very confident that with the eight Thomas conversation, it was a lengthy discussion, it was very thorough, we gave everyone basically their, their due process, and we acted as the check and balance, which is the interpreter of the current law. If, if someone doesn't like it, there's always the appeals process, and then, you know, I, I think that to go beyond that, and to request more than that, is not really something that we can provide as, as, as a planning commission. So, perhaps if we reiterate the fact that, you know, we have a certain role to play, limited by the criteria we're given, and we are allowed certain discretionary, professional discretionary tools, that we do apply, and we have very reasonable grounds to make those decisions, then there's no reason to go behind those stated public decisions, that I personally, and I think that I speak for all of the commissioners here, that we have a very clear professional conscience about the decision that was made, that, that, that we, that we put forward. And so, after considering all of the opinions and all of the community input, so I'm, I'm hoping that moving forward, maybe one of the tools that was suggested at the training session today, to remind people of ground rules and guidelines, and expectations, to set them reasonably, so that they're actually achievable, right? Something that we can actually attain, not something that's beyond the purview of this, of this body.
I think that the planning commission should recognize that when we make a decision, and it's a contentious decision, that it should and can be sent for appeal, because the city council is the place where they can take an overview and maybe change a policy. We can't change a policy, we can only, you know, do what the planning commission can do. And I think that it was a good thing it was taken to the appeals process. I feel that was fair. Anytime that there's a really contentious situation, I welcome the fact that it goes to the appeals process. I would not feel comfortable if it did not, and I think that that is, we are working for the council, the council, you know, is the governing body that asked us to sit on the, the planning commission. And so, once we make a decision, if someone wants to appeal it, they have a right, and they should. And what I was hearing was that people were feeling that offended by this, you know, that we had done our job, and why was it taken to, you know, for appeal? But really, if they had had gone the way that this particular, you know, so, whatever group it was, since it was a contentious situation, had not, we had not gone along with them, they would have wanted it appealed. You know, so if, if the judgment had gone in a way that, that they felt was unfair, unfair, they should go through an appeals process. And I don't feel offended, I feel that this was, this was appropriate, you know, and I think that the city has a right to, to be divided. I mean, that's the way cities are, and, and I, you know, I just wanna stand up to the process. And, and I, you know, I, I just want to stand up to the process. I think that is an appropriate process. I'm happy that we did it. And that's what I have to say.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's arguing the process because I agree. If we make a decision that's not right, everybody has every right in the world to appeal a decision that we make. That wasn't my comments.
But.
I think that's what I think, that that's, that's not what we are talking about.
But I, you know.
That, that the, the appeal process is there for certain reason, is that certain people, they think that they have more, they disagree with our decision, they can go back to the, the council. There's no problem with that. But in this particular instance, what happened was that there was, there was a sense of certain animosity towards the planning commission. Uh, I mean, it should have been neutral, you know, if, if you disagree with certain thing.
That's fine.
You have equal right to come and say before the council.
But what does it?
I don't think we, we are saying that you should not have the appeal process. It, it is good to have the appeal process, but the thing, the way it, it was, it went up, the way, the way it was conducted, that's the problem that we are talking about, that it created sort of an, an animosity. It shouldn't be that way because we all have a differences of opinion, there's nothing wrong with that. And there should be a way to express that rather than creating this.
Yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have our community feel torn apart. We shouldn't have our community feeling intimidated to speak.
What we did, the process that we did as a planning commission, I felt that I had not done things as well as I could have. And, um, you know, and, and of course I am, I was the chair and I, I feel that maybe I should have stepped in it a couple of times and changed the dynamics. But we are a group of citizens and we make mistakes. And as a group of citizens, we should look at ourself on our commission and see if we had done things correctly. Because if we had done things in, in a correct way, I think we could have, uh, created less animosity.
Well, I don't know what correct way we didn't follow.
Well, that was hence my question. What do we do to create community? We need to create community.
All right.
All of us.
Let's talk about this. I have not spoken, but I will talk about this. What I think we should not have done in the middle of the, the, um, citizens bringing forth the, their ideas about what the story polls were showing, we should not, as a group, have gone in and shown our own photos. I think that was wrong. I think that.
You should have done what?
I don't think that the planning commission should have come forward and shown their own photos. I think that the, the citizens were showing photos, the staff was showing photos, and during that process, the planning commission showed their own photos. And I think that created a situation that, that could have created a lot of animosity.
I don't think, uh, that's, you know, anything wrong that planning commission did that because one of the, our job is to evaluate what's there. And the best way to evaluate is to go see ourselves and take pictures of ourselves if need to be.
At what point do we discuss? The, the question I have for the planning commission is at what point do we actually talk about that? Do we do it during the public comment or do we do it after the public comment has been closed? And what I felt I did incorrectly was I said, uh, we did, we had not, we kept the public comment open for another meeting and then we showed the, the photographs that we had done. And I'm not sure that, you know, that was, that was appropriate because I think once we did that, then that caused, um, a lot of division in this community.
But the thing is, don't we have the, the liberty to go and do our own research?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
That's what we did in this particular case. Karen, Karen, exactly what she did. She went and looked, she listened to the community, you know, concerns and she wanted to confirm that. And I, I would do the same thing. I went myself and did the survey, for example, that I mentioned it to the council, that I wanted to see average person can be there, really can see that or not. And I don't think, I mean, I disagree with you on that part and I don't know other commissioners.
Well, I'm not so certain because I know that when the council did that, they all, every single one of them went and looked at the story polls after the public comment was finished. They didn't step in during the public comment. When they were ready to make a decision, then they talked about what they had observed. So I'm, I don't know. I don't know, but I think that, uh, as the chair, maybe I made a mistake. And, and that is what caused a huge rift in the, um, the town. I don't know, but I, it's something for me to think about.
Karen, Karen, what do you have to say about this?
I've said everything I need to say. I've made my comments. I made my comments about the phone calls. That was quite disturbing to me that I had a lot of people call me and say they felt intimidated to speak publicly. And I think that's a travesty, but we have that.
I think the best thing to do now is move forward and try to rebuild the, you know.
Building community.
Community and, and whosoever got offended or whatever the reason was, I think as a whole commission, we should reassure that whatever we are doing is for the betterment, betterment of the community and using the best knowledge we have and the responsibilities that given to us and the laws and, and the codes that are, that we are to follow. That's all we can do. And if the community has concerns, we are, they are welcome to come and express their view here. And they can even call us separately and discuss with us what their concerns are. The problem is a lot of times they don't even say anything and then the rumors fly around, which is worse than face to face say to me, what did I do wrong? I'm here to listen and if I made something wrong, I'll be more than happy to correct that, right?
Any other comments? Any other?
Well, I mean, I'll just add, I think we did our duty and, and we, we may have made some, you know, mistakes along the way, if you want to call it that. I think the, the process, you know, Carolyn, what you mentioned is maybe it would have, maybe the process, the steps we took were a little bit looser in that we should have closed public, you know, testimony or comment and then, and not participated in that, maybe just where we participated was overlapping.
Right.
And the procedural matter, you know, is basically.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, I could agree with that. I don't think that was a, I don't think you were being irresponsible or anything. It was, it was a difficult situation because there was some gray area in defining, you know, that ordinance and that was the big issue, I think, just all around. You know, and our job is to take public testimony. We can't command respect, you know, from the public and how they treat each other, except, you know, what you were saying, to move forward and, and lead by example. So it's good to reflect and, and we all, I think, did our duty in also following up through the, um, appeal and, and, and telling the city council that we, we did feel good about our decision, you know, though it was difficult and we, we spoke up. And, um, obviously they came back and agreed with that. So, um, I hope they're, uh, okay with our decision.
Yeah, I told, uh, you know, uh, Tim Tune at the time and we were looking at this, that this ordinance is going to create a headache and it did. And they didn't listen to me, but.
Could I just, could I just add one last thought? Um, it's interesting that, you know, when, when you look at the process that, um, our previous, our former chair seems to think that maybe perhaps an interjection on her part in bringing, um, Commissioner Cunningham's presentation into just the private discussion may have actually helped things. I was thinking the, during the process, that the purpose was to allow the public to respond, meaning you believe in the open comments section or area of the agenda so that there can be a response because once we close off public comments or the comments section, it becomes a private discussion here and then.
Right.
There's no, there's no dialogue. So interestingly, I thought that that would actually allow, facilitate greater dialogue and close off the option of making a monologue, which would be more inclusive of the community. So I guess that's just an illustration of the fact that one action, no matter how innocuous it could be, can be interpreted various ways. But I think ultimately what I'm hearing everyone saying is that we all feel that we did the best we could do with the constraints we were given, with the criteria we were given and, um, moving forward, we want, we want to build a community, but that community cannot be built if you have the animosity. And so the animosity should not come from any of that. It should be just taken on a good faith effort, which I think has to be built into our discussion moving forward, right? That every decision that we make here, we are citizens and by virtue of being citizens, we are equally invested in the same issues that our community is invested in. And if we all come from that vantage point, it's, I can't feel any animosity just because someone differs in my, in opinion with me. So I think we just need to agree to disagree and move forward, but release that animosity so we can build community.
Yeah. And what it creates also is that, you know, the people get shy away be, as, as Karen, Karen mentioned, because, um, you, you know, they're, you're labeled as he's such and such or she's such and such and all that. And that should, shouldn't be stopped, but I don't know how. And I don't think, you know, in my time, I would be able to do that, but good luck to you, all of you. And, uh, that's all I can say at this point, that I will try, whosoever I meet, I always tell them to come to our meetings and be participant and be open minded. Whatever discussion we have, we'd like to hear from you and you'd like to, you should hear from us too.
Carolyn, you have anything else? No?
I just want to add one last thing. Just want to say that, you know, the, the citizens out there, if you live here for, you know, one month or 40 years, you should be just as important and, and, and that, you know, to me, that's the case. So it doesn't matter how long you lived here. Um, you know, we all have different backgrounds and histories and with Brisbane, um, but I, I want that kind of community where people feel like they belong to a small town. You know, I think we all do, so, yeah.
But at the same time, all together.
Yeah, together.
Not just few group people to consider as.
Whether you just moved here or you've lived here your whole life, you know.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
No, still I have one comment. It has nothing to do with this one here.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't know whether, any of, all of you got this, um, this email from one of the citizen. Uh, I got it today and they're talking about the commission is continuously, you know, we are canceling the meetings over and over again. And I think it was addressed to you, Carolyn, and I got the copy of that. And the main reason that, um, in that memo was, I mean, in that email was that, uh, there are a lot of issues that the commission can, can discuss and we don't do that and we are continuously canceling the meetings. And the, how come the planning commission doesn't direct the staff to come bring those, those issues? And basically, the whole thing has to do with the general plan and the adoption of the policies and all that. And, um, in so many words, I thought that they were, the, the, um, the, that particular person was saying that the, you know, maybe it's my interpretation or I may be wrong, but the planning commission is not doing the job of, um, finishing the unfinished business. As I said earlier, when you asked me about the general plan, the ball was in the court of the council. Now this memo says that that's not the case, that's what I read and.
That was not included in that.
You were not included in that.
I didn't either.
So.
So it was just.
What, what I like to, what I like, well, the reason I want to bring this up is that, that it's coming up over and over and over again and it was addressed to Carol, Carolyn, but I don't know why I got copied on that too. That we need to have some kind of a message here from the, and I can give you the copies of that or forward the copies to you. So you, you can all review that and I think we need to address that because it's been mentioned more than once to me, several times.
That, that too many planning commission meetings have been canceled?
Cancelled and there are a lot of issues that the planning commission can, uh, discuss and we are not doing that. And there is a lot of things regarding the general plan and the, and the review of the courts and all that, that's been, and we have the perfect time to do all that, but we are not doing that. All we're doing is we're canceling the meetings.
But doesn't some of that, some of what, a lot of those items depend on resources behind us and the staff?
Well, according to that, I mean, you can read that memo and I'll, I'll forward that to you, to all of you and I think.
You can send it to city staff as well.
I'll send it to city staff also and I think the, if that's the case, then we need to do something, we need to respond to, to that person as to why. Because.
I have received emails in the past with that exact language, so I'm fairly certain I know where it's coming from. And yeah, it'd probably be a really good idea for us to understand why meetings are canceled and we can't fill those slots with stuff. We've got lots of stuff we could discuss.
Yeah, well, to me it makes sense. I mean, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. We have to all be in sync to deal with these issues. We can't just go, okay, we're going to fill up, you know, these six items without the support of, you know, the, the rest of the staff as well because we're, we're working at, I mean, isn't that true? I mean, we're working at.
So I, what I suggest is I will forward that memo in case if you don't, if you didn't get it, I'll send that, that email to, to all of you and let's put that on the next meeting's agenda. So we can discuss that. And I think the, I think the person has a, has a genuine concern, then we should address that.
Sure, of course. I don't disagree with that. Do we have staff comment on that?
There is no reason for us, for me to just, uh, read it and put it aside. So I won't hold commission to, to.
Can we talk about this, John? Yeah.
So I think they should put it in the next agenda. Did you agree to, Ms. Chairman, Chairperson?
Sorry.
Did you agree with that?
Yes.
As items by, uh, initiated by the commission, is that what you're saying?
Or you can have independent, uh, item by itself to do with the.
Items initiated by the commission.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter which.
Well, I think that's the appropriate place for it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
So I make a motion to adjourn?
To the regular meeting of April 10th?
April 10th, yes.
7:30?
I second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And you all finish the ethics committee?
No, tomorrow.